Okay, it's, uh, I'm ready to start. I know we have seven of us here on the committee. And we have four bills today. And before I start, I'm going to turn it over to Matt to do roll call and do his script regards to public testimony. Matt, you ready?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Members of the committee, if you could respond when I call your name to let us know that you're here. Chairman Reisinger?
Here.
Vice Chair Sneed?
Here.
Councilwoman Clark?
Here.
Councilman Costello?
Present. Present.
Thank you. Councilman Dorsey? Councilman Dorsey is logged in, but he had to step away. Councilman Pinkett?
Here.
Councilwoman Middleton?
Present.
Councilman Stokes?
Here, I am here.
Thank you. And I will just briefly discuss the committee's process for public testimony. If you're connecting via computer, we ask that you use the raise hand function to let the committee know that you would like to testify. Users who are calling in don't have a raise hand function, and so we will unmute you one by one when we get to the public testimony portion of the hearing. Attendees will hear two beeps when you're unmuted. And we ask that each speaker state their name prior to beginning their testimony. If we're not able to understand somebody who's speaking, we will ask them to either call back or provide testimony through the chat function. And this just shows controls that each of the public attendees should have. Have the participants button and chat button right next to it. If you click on participants, you should see the hand icon that will raise your hand to let us know that you would like to testify. Depending on how you've logged in, that could alternatively be in the list of attendees next to your name instead. And if you're having difficulties finding the raise hand button, you can also use the chat function to send a message to the host to let us know that you would like to testify. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Matt. We're going to start with City Council Bill 20-0572. It's a rezoning at 1301 North Fulton Avenue. The purpose of changing zoning for the property noted as 1301 North Fulton Avenue, Block 0032, Lot 051, as outlined in red on the accompanying plat, rezoning from an R8 zoning district to the C1 zoning district. It's by understanding that public notice requirements have been met. And at this time, I call on Councilwoman Pinkett, who's the sponsor of the bill. Councilman Pinkett, are you available?
Yes, thank you, Chairman Reisinger. As you said, this particular bill is a request to change the zoning of 1301 North Fulton from the R8 zoning to C1. This particular property has been a longstanding commercial property with no potential use of then maybe the architecture of the property. Somebody's, I think it's unmuted. Okay. It's, as I said, a longstanding commercial use with non-residential other than the architecture of the building. This particular rezoning has received tremendous support from the community. There is a letter, I don't know if it made it over, I know it's part of the Planning Commission hearings, from the Fulton Community Association. And so this, not that it matters as it relates to zoning, but this particular property owner, business owner, has had a longstanding relationship with the community, very supportive of the community. And this zoning actually facilitates a request that the community is asking for this particular location to be transferred from a BD7 to a A7 license. And so the community's in support, and I ask for the committee to support this rezoning. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Councilman. Any questions from the committee to the councilmen? No? Okay, thank you, Councilman. We will now start with agency reports. Planning staff, Eric?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the committee. This bill was presented to the Planning Commission in their meeting of August 20th. Staff recommended disapproval, and the Planning Commission also recommended disapproval. You know, we do have a letter of support that we received from the community, which I can forward for your records if that's helpful. One of the things that we need to do is take the longer view, because rezonings are in perpetuity until changed again and are not necessarily about the applicant or the individual owner at that time. In looking at the process for rezoning that rezone the entirety of the city, one of the common themes was to reduce the number of alcohol outlets that were in non-conforming uses in our residential neighborhoods. This is one of those examples. So it was specifically zoned R8 to remove that. At the same time, we offered the neighborhood commercial establishment as a use. That way, non-conforming uses in buildings that were not necessarily conducive for renovation to all residential would still have viable commercial activities as options, just not the alcohol sales portion. And we don't believe in looking at the state-required findings for rezoning, that this meets any of those, and that's what led to our recommendation for disapproval. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Eric? No? Okay, thank you. We will now go on to BMZA.
I'll leave a note for the BMZA. First, I just noticed there's an error in our report. It should just say BMZA has reviewed the legislation and does not object to City Council Bill 14-19.
Okay, so you're going, BMZA's gone from unfavorable to no objection, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. DOT?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I have a question for BMZA.
Councilman Dorsey, you got the floor, go ahead.
Thank you, sir. BMZA, I asked this question, or a similar question, I think in the last hearing. I'm still trying to understand how BMZA kind of determines its position on bills. It just seems like, there's like an overlap of with what the planning department does. I don't, I just really don't get it. And since the BMZA is a board, and I think you said that the board members and the board is not fully consulted and it's not a vote of the board, how does BMZA make its determinations on a bill like this?
So the BMZA reviews all the materials that are available. So we look at the statement of intent, the plat, the first reader. We still have access to all housing and permanent zoning records, so we can find all those things that are in the planning department staff's report about the history of the use and all of those things. So we review all of that and make our recommendation that way.
Councilman Dorsey, you're muted.
I think you're muted.
So it's a staff report from BMZA?
Yes.
I guess I...
So there's, sorry, go ahead.
It just seems so odd to me.
So there's a special report that is run by the board. So the staff says, here's all the information we have. It's all run by the board. We draft our report that way. The executive director signs off on it. The difference between this and the planning departments is the planning department has a full hearing with public testimony in front of the Planning Commission to get their report. Ours is, we don't have a full board hearing for every bill.
Well, but the planning, okay, so the planning department staff makes their recommendation to it, to the Planning Commission. I guess, I'm trying to understand, how does BMZA, what criteria? So, for example, I understand that the health department might consider a bill on different criteria than DOT might consider a bill, or DPW might consider a bill. I understand kind of the jurisdictional differences between how these agencies approach a bill. How does BMZA approach a bill in any way that differs from the planning department staff?
It's not wholly different, because in both cases, we are looking at the zoning code and all the things that law department mentions in terms of fraud and mistake and regularity and all of that. So it's a similar review based on the history of the use and everything we have and the code itself. The difference being, we don't have that full public hearing portion. Otherwise, it is similar evidence.
But the planning department doesn't have that hearing. I mean, it's still, it's still just a, it sounds, it seems to me, I guess I'm just really curious about this because from the planning department, which precedes the Planning Commission here, is not different from the BMZA. It's just, one is implicative of the other, it seems. And I just can't understand the difference, or how, in this case, as a good example, how planning commissions, planning department staff could come up with one report and BMZA come up with a differing opinion, based on the same availability of information?
Yeah, Council, let me interject. I understand it's a good question. I think it takes you and BMZA to have a discussion about this. But since I sit on the Planning Commission, real quick, so we can move on, planning staff gives a recommendation, that's all it is, a recommendation. They give, planning staff gives that to the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission has a hearing, they vote on it. Sometimes they vote with planning staff, sometimes they don't. And then it comes over to us on the council to make the final decision. So it's just an agency report. But what I ask is, perhaps maybe you need to sit down with BMZA and have a discussion with them. Councilman, you still there?
That's all then, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Okay. I see you're driving your car.
Yeah, yeah, is he driving?
Yes, he's driving a automobile, so I'm not being funny, Councilman. Okay, let's go, let's go with, do we do?
Living room.
Law Department?
Hi, Mr. Chair, this is Hillary Rulie on behalf of the Law Department. We will not be signing the bill for form and legal sufficiency because it's simply not a mistake. All these liquor stores were heavily studied. And while there might be a desire from the community or others now to change the zoning, it was never a mistake. It was actually intentional to zone residential in order to amortize the liquor store. And so because there isn't a legal mistake or any ability to find one, you cannot sign the bill for form and legal sufficiency.
Okay. Hillary, I did that, I understand. I just want to, I just want to throw my piece into it, that as Chairman Lanius, when we did the comprehensive rezoning, and I remember clearly that there was a list, at that time, the council had the opportunity as a courtesy, and I had two liquor stores in my district that I went from an R8 to a C1, and we all agreed with that on the council. Unfortunately, there were some council people that are no longer here that would not give that courtesy to a liquor store to convert it to a C1. And I think that's why we have today, I'm assuming, new council people are putting in legislation to change that to C1. I just want to give that clarity, okay?
I mean, I can hear that, thank you.
Okay. Councilwoman Clark? Yeah, Councilwoman Clark?
I just want to, you were reading my mind when you spoke those words. And I'm not a lawyer, so I can say outrageous things such as this. This location was, it was a mistake that every other district had council reps who were checking with neighborhoods, and if there was neighborhood support for one of these phased-out liquor establishments, then we would through transform, rezone it to a C1, which I did twice also in my district after neighborhoods met, et cetera. The mistake is, and I know it's not legal, but it's real, that one whole district got left out of that opportunity for communities to speak. And now, in this moment, there's a community that says they want one of these places. And it puts, it's a bind for us, and we have to, we have to also reflect on what you've said, and I second it.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Chairman?
Yes. Yes, Councilwoman Middleton?
Yes, I just concur with you, Mr. Chair, and with my colleague, Councilwoman Clark. I also had one in my district, and the overwhelming community support, the jobs, the, they do other things, the groceries, the, it's, you know, I agree with my colleagues and support this bill.
Thank you, Matt and Vice President. No other committee members, we will go to HCD? HCD?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is Matt Stegman from the mayor's office. Steph Murdock texted me, she's been having some technical problems, so hopefully she'll be able to join us later in the hearing, but...
She's, she's here, yeah. Thanks, Matt.
Sorry about that, yes, Stephanie Murdock, Legislative Liaison for the Department of Housing and Community Development. We stand by our report in opposition to the legislation.
Thank you. Let's go to BDC. BDC? Okay, nobody from BDC. We don't even have a report. Matt, I don't see a report. Do we hear a report from, no?
Mr. Chair, this is Jim Davis from DOT. I just wanted to say that we stand by our bill report, which is no objection.
Would I leave you out?
I think I was speaking right when Councilman Dorsey chimed in.
Okay, okay, thank you. We haven't received no report from BDC. Matt, you have anything regards to that?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, this is Matt Stegman. I do have a note in my email inbox here from BDC. They are working on getting a report. There was some confusion about the bill referrals, and somehow, somehow they missed this particular bill, but we will have a report to the committee. And also, that's all the committee members as soon as I receive it.
Okay, thank you. If there's no questions to the agency from council members, we'll go on to public testimony. Matt, you have any?
Testimony? Thank you, Mr. Chair. Before we start, I'll just remind everyone who's joining us from the public that if you would like to testify, please use the raise hand function to let us know. And if you can't find the raise hand function, you can also use the chat to send a message to the host. We have Caroline Hecker.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Caroline Hecker Rosenberg Martin Greenberg on behalf of the applicant, Ms. Lee. I think she might be in the call as well. This property, as Councilwoman Pinkett noted, has been a commercial operation for a very long time. In fact, it's been a packaged goods store since right after prohibition ended in 1934. It's had a packaged goods store there uninterruptedly for 80 years. And it was a mistake in the 2017 Transform Baltimore to rezone the property to R8. The property actually became R8 in 1971, when the city did its last comprehensive zoning. And at that time, it didn't matter that it became non-conforming, because at that time, a non-conforming use could stay, as long as it was not interrupted, it could remain in place forever. And then, in, as you all know, in 2017, when the city did transform, there was a provision that would require all non-conforming liquor stores to close after two years. This property should not have been included in that group, as has been indicated by a number of the members of this committee this morning. Yeah, certain establishments brought their situation to the attention of their local council members at that time, and they were zoned appropriately during the Transform Baltimore process. Not every property owner had that opportunity for a variety of reasons. Ms. Lee, who has operated this store for a long time, did not, was not able to get her property considered for rezoning during Transform Baltimore. And it was a mistake for that property to have residential zoning going forward. The, Ms. Lee has a stellar reputation in the neighborhood, as Councilwoman Pinkett indicated. She has made a continued commitment to community engagement. She participates in events such as weekly soup kitchens, monthly produce distributions, and the annual back-to-school community health festival. She takes pride in her store. She keeps both the interior and the exterior clean and tidy. She discourages loitering in and around the premises. She's an all-around good neighbor. And the zoning of this property to the R8 district was a mistake that should be corrected by rezoning the property to C1 at this time. With regard to the findings that the council's required to make and things that the council's required to consider in approving the rezoning, the population change, there has not been a significant change in population since the 2010 census. And with no population growth, there is no need to eliminate occupied commercial space in favor of residential uses. In addition, there is not an overproliferation of alcoholic beverages outlets within the census tract or within the surrounding area. I submitted written findings of fact to Mr. Peters, and included in those were a couple of exhibits, including one that shows the location of all non-conforming alcoholic beverage outlets. And you can see that there are not, this is not a dense area for alcoholic beverage outlets. With regard to the availability of public facilities, the area is well-served by public utilities. It will remain so for the foreseeable future. The proposed rezoning will have no impact on the availability of public facilities. Likewise, it will have no impact on present or future transportation patterns. This area is underserved by public transportation. There's only one MTA bus route within a three-block radius. There are no metro stops within a 10-minute walk. The neighborhood, as I said, is poorly served by public transit, and as a result, local corner stores such as this one provide important community services to the surrounding neighborhoods. The proposed C1 zoning is consistent with the property's longstanding existing use, and it's consistent with zoning that's located across the street from this site, there's C1 zoning. The Fulton Community Association supports the proposed rezoning. Obviously, the Planning Commission made an opposite recommendation. Respectfully, we disagree with them. We support what the zoning board found in not having an objection based on the historical uses of the property. The proposed amendment to the zoning is consistent with the city's comprehensive master plan. It creates opportunities for commercial services to exist near residential communities, creating amenities for city residents. With regard to the standards the council's required to consider on math amendments specifically, the existing uses of the property within the general area, the existing use as a retail establishment, retail goods establishment with alcoholic beverage sales, has been there for 80 years. It had permit approval prior to transform. And clearly, when the city council zoned the property to R8 with the requirement that businesses such as this closed down, it did not consider the specific qualities of this individual existing business. The zoning classification of other properties within the general area, as I mentioned, there's C1 across the street from this property. It's not inconsistent with the surrounding area for this property to also have C1 zoning. The property is not suitable for the uses permitted in the R8 zoning district, which, as I said, would require the existing packaged goods store to terminate. It's, the packaged goods store, as I said, has operated since right after prohibition in 1934. So clearly, there is a longstanding need for this type of use to exist in this location. And then finally, with regard to the trend of development within the general area, there is no development that has taken place or is proposed in the immediate vicinity of the site. And, you know, with the action in 2017 of rezoning the property to R8, this would result in closing one of the only operating businesses on this block, which would contribute to blight in the neighborhood. So for all of these reasons, we believe that there was a mistake during the Transform Baltimore rezoning process, and that this property should be rezoned to the C1 zoning district, and we ask for the committee's support of the bill.
Thank you, Caroline. Any questions for Caroline from the committee? No? Okay, thank you. Matt, any other public testimony?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have Roxanne Purdyman.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I'm Roxanne Purdyman. I'm the vice president of the Fulton Community Association, and I basically wanted to ditto what the last speaker said. I am, we do approve of the C1 zoning. Ms. Lee has been very supportive of the community. I am also the vice president of the Western District Community Relations and the outreach director for First Mount Calvary Baptist Church. Ms. Lee, like I said, has been consistently supportive of our produce distribution, soup kitchen, numerous outreaches. She has no loitering on the front of her business. It's been in operation for years, and they've always been supportive of the community. I can't say that for all of the establishments, all liquor establishments in Alzico, but Ms. Lee has been supportive. Ms. Lee cleans inside and out of her building. There's no loitering. So we just wanted to state that we were in agreement with the C1 zoning.
Yeah, on behalf, on behalf of the committee, Lanius Committee, we thank you for your testimony and have a good day.
I have a question.
Hey, Councilman.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I didn't get your name, ma'am. You the vice president of the Fulton Community?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, what is your name?
Roxanne Purdyman.
Thank you, ma'am. I guess, do you have any thoughts as to the planning commission's position and the planning department's position? And that is that the, the long, is that about taking the long view of the potential outcomes of rezoning? While I hear you and understand your and the community association's support of Ms. Lee and for her, you know, participation, the community interest in her maintenance and upkeep of the building and such, that there is, that rezoning means that, you know, certain uses, this liquor store establishment, could be taken over by somebody else in the future, and that, that they may not be the same kind of good actor as Ms. Lee. And I guess, do you, has the community considered what could happen in the future that the current zoning protects against?
Yes, we have. We have thought of that. We've had discussion. We've come up with an agreement that will be passed down. In any event, Ms. Lee, no longer owns the establishment, that whoever comes in, her replacement, will actually perform as she did, as she did. That's part of the agreement.
Okay, Councilman.
So you have some sort of agreement with her not to sell the building or the business to people if they don't seem right or something?
They can't, they can't MOU for that.
Yeah, so I don't know, it sounds uncertain to me. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I'm being graceful. I think that Councilman Pinkett and the community had that dialogue, and thank you for your concern, Councilman, I understand. So, Matt, is there any other public testimony?
No, Mr. Chair, we do not have anybody else who indicates they wish to testify.
Okay, so, thank you. Right now, we're going to go on to defining of facts. Do we have a motion to move the finding of facts?
They're moved.
Moved by Pinkett. Do I have a second?
Second, Clark.
Second by Clark. All those in favor of the finding of facts say aye. Aye. Those opposed say nay. The ayes have it, the finding of facts pass. There's no amendments to this bill. So what I ask, do we move the bill favorable?
They're moved.
Second.
Second, moved by Pinkett, second by Clark. Reisinger votes yes. Sneed?
Yes.
Sneed is a yes. Snee is a yes. Clark?
Yes.
Clark say yes. Costello?
Yes.
Costello's a, Dorsey?
Abstained.
Dorsey abstains. Okay. Middleton?
Yes.
Middleton is a yes. Pinkett?
Yes.
Pinkett's a yes. Stokes?
Yes.
Stokes is a yes. We have one, two, three, four, five, six. We have a seven yes with one abstained. The bill passes, and will come out on second reader, November the 16th. Yes. This concludes City Council Bill 20-0572.